Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin our first public hearing. It will be Attorney Pat Lavelle and Donald Mamano. Would you like to come up? Oh, you want to do roll call first? Okay.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild. Okay. Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Small.
Here. Thank you. Please come up.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following: Resolution Number 307, 2025, accepting the recommendation of the Historic Architectural Review Board and denying the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a fence at 301, 303 Penn Avenue.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Attorney Pat Lavelle. What I would like to do is to distribute to members of council a letter in response to what you had received from Do they need copies of this? Do they need copies of this? Oh, he's getting it. Okay. So, gentlemen, a quick summary of what I present in this letter is a notification that the Harb Board, although they may have had a meeting in November, it wasn't advertised, we weren't invited, and it was our application that was the subject matter of the hearing, if there was one. And we say that what we're asking for is the opportunity to get a fair consideration for my client, Lyndon Taylor. I have with me this evening Donald Mamano, who is the president of that organization. Basically, what we're asking for is a new hearing to be held by Harb because we don't think that they should have had a hearing without us being there. And certainly, what's being asked for is that Mr. Mamano have the opportunity to properly address the board and to offer his support of what he submitted. I have attached to the letter I've given you a copy of the application that he had submitted to the Harb Board, and I bring to your attention that on the last page is a depiction of the fence, which I think is appropriately illustrated. At this point, I think it's appropriate, in light of the schedule that you have for this evening, that I ask Mr. Mamano to come forward and to offer you his comments as to what he thinks about what has occurred and the appropriateness of the fence that he's erected and which is now being objected to by Harb. Mr. Mamano.
Good evening. I'm always embarrassed even to be here to talk about a fence around a parking lot. I mean, I've been before the zoning hearing board for this exact piece of property. When I acquired it a couple of years ago, the old block-and-chew building, sure all aware, is a blighted, fired-out building that was deemed unsavageable by the city's engineers and building department. Unfortunately, so I was forced to demolish the building. You know, bringing in Rob Friedman from Friedman Hospitality across the street, where Harry's bar used to be, making a tremendous investment in that corner. Part of my deal with him coming into that location was to provide the parking across the street with the subject parcel. I went before the zoning hearing board. I got the approval to make it a parking lot. One of their conditions was to put a fence up around the property, which has been done. I have some pictures I'd like to share with you. And I -- so the reason why I guess I'm here now, when I got that approval and I got the variance, I thought we were good to put the fence up. I didn't know I had to get Harb's approval. When I filed for the permit to get the building permit, I was notified we had to go before Harb. Unfortunately, it was the day they were doing the -- putting the fence up. So I spoke to the city, and they said, "You do have to apply to Harb," and I -- you know, and whatever their decision is, you have to -- you're stuck with it. I get that. And I just figured it was with the weather. They were doing it that day. And I'm like, "I'm putting in the exact same fence that's at Duffy Jewelers, one block away, and at the Cathedral, one block the other direction." So we talk about being consistent with the neighborhood. It's the exact fence. It's an $18,000 fence. It was the most expensive fence that I could have put on the property. I'd like to share some of those photos. The first one was there down -- the exact same fence, one block in the direction, one in the right -- then I also have pictures of another lot showing the option of that fence, which was currently across the street, a lot less aesthetically pleasing to the downtown -- so if you see the photographs, you know, the first one of showing what the current lot looks like today with the fence, the other one showing the two comparable properties within a block from this, the rectory building, Duffy Jewelers, with the exact same fence, and then another parking lot with not such aesthetically pleasing fence. So that's just showing what I did, why it fits into the community and the downtown. And I -- you know, people think it looks great. It's a significant improvement from what was there before. But my bigger question is, is for Harb. Like, I applied for Harb. I was never -- I paid $150 for my application. I was never invited. I know in the letter that they sent, counsel had said it was a publicly advertised, public forum, whatever the letter was they put on there. I was never even asked to go before Harb. And when I contacted the city and Jacob Weinberg, who we were communicating back through the portal, I asked him, after I found out that I'd never received it, I said, "Jacob, I've never received any further communication about this Harb application. When is it going to be scheduled before Harb?" I never got a response. So for whatever reason, I was never invited for my own application, and I would have presented to them, just like I present to the board today, the same information. And I've never been invited to go present my case before Harb. And then they denied it, and I think their letter was a little extreme as to why they denied it. So I mean, that's why we're here today. I mean, I don't know if I'm here today to, you know, to Attorney Lavelle's point that I want to go back to Harb because I was never invited to go. I don't know. Did they have a quorum? Did they even have it? It wasn't even advertised. I wasn't invited. So does it go back to Harb? Or does the board or his counsel have the authority to just vote for it? Or is -- I don't know why I'm really here, other than I got a letter.
Is your fence different than what was initially submitted?
So it -- from their letter, and they are correct, that the application that was submitted had a picture of a fence that had a little point, or like
On the top.
On the top. This fence wasn't available to get. And this is what my fence contractor, Superior Fence or -- I forget the name of the company. That's what they originally quoted me. And then when I went to order, he said, "We can't get that fence." And then the other fence that he gave me, which he said, "We also installed that at Duffy Jewelers on the rectory." And I went with that fence because it was the one that was available. But I mean, it's literally the difference of a point or a squared-off thing. From a liability standpoint, I'd rather not have a pointy object standing up on every balancer of the fence anyway. So I didn't think that was that. And if I would have went before Harb, and I have gone before Harb, but there's something different in my application to what's really going to be occurring, then I would have that conversation there.
Mr. Mamano, there's an allegation that there was a stop-work order issued on the job when you were conducting it. Is that correct?
When the fence was being installed, there was a stop-work order for not having a permit for the fence. Like I said, when I got the variance and when the parking lot was being paved, I thought that was all under one application. So then when I contacted the city, when we got the stop-work order that day, I was informed that you did pull a permit for the work being done for the parking lot. However, the fence was not identified on the permit. I said, "Okay. Would you like me to apply for a permit separately for the fence?" They said, "Yes." When I did that, is when it's -- it didn't advance because of the Harb. They had to go before Harb. When I spoke to the city on that, I still felt that it wasn't necessary to go before Harb because the way I read the Harb ordinance that it's, you know, there has to be a building or the facade or stand blasting, anything with the facade of a building. I said, "There's no building there." And they said, "We have to go to Harb anyway." I said, "Okay." But the guys are doing the fence after they did the parking lot, and they were there to do it. And I say, "Can we just do it, pull the permit for it, knowing that it's got to go to Harb, and they'll give me the final blessing?" And then I think that upset it hard, and that's why they sent the letter and I'm here today. And it was never intended to do that. I mean, I have a lot of money invested into this parking lot. I would have been happy to bring it to Harb, and it's unfortunate that when I found out and then when I applied, they never allowed me to come and present it.
Any counsel, people have any more questions? Anything else? No. And no one else is on our sign-in sheet, so that will be -- if there's no further business. And what we'll do is we'll discuss it, we'll -- and give you our answer. But there's a few things here that have changed from the letter that you have explained that are a little different. So we'll
No, there's a lot. I mean, their letter said they had a public forum, and they advertised it, and I wasn't even invited, and it wasn't even televised. I would have loved to have seen that meeting. And I'd like to know, do they have more than -- I don't know what the quorum is that they need to have. I mean, there's nine members, and if there's only three people, does that even validate them to vote on it?
Okay. We will find that all out.
So when will I hear back?
I would think we'll discuss this later on this evening before we do a vote on it.
Right.
Yes. So
Okay.
Possibly
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
So if there's no further business, undertake a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. I would call this public hearing to order. I'll call again.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Small.
Here. Dr. Rothschild is on communication here for right now. She is ill, but she is still communicating through the phone.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following: Filed accounts on number 104, 2025, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Scranton to amend provisions related to hospitals and off-street parking, and to amend the zoning map.
Thank you. So our speakers first, this -- I'll go by the sign-in sheet. First
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening to everyone. I have spoken many times in support of giving the Geisinger Hospital what they need to be able to maintain and grow their space in Scranton so that we all, not just in Scranton, but in the entire region, can have the care that we need. It is the only trauma center in Lackawanna County, and it is something that we have relied on since 1905 in this community. So for 120 years, people have relied on the footprint in the Hill section as a place to go in their very worst moments. This amendment isn't about what's going to happen in five weeks or five months or even five years. This is about what will happen in the next 120 years. In my view, it is paramount that we are helping, as a city, helping to foster an environment for our major healthcare facilities, our major employers, to grow and continue to anchor our city as an employer, as a tax base for us as we continue to manage our finances, but most especially as a place to go for ourselves, our families, and our neighbors in those moments when we need them. Just a couple of weeks ago, Ryan and I took the girls to the trampoline park. We went to Defy on a Sunday evening. We thought, "What a great way to spend a cold winter night." Well, all of a sudden, the two-year-old is bouncing, and she's on the ground, and she's screaming, and she has a fracture in her leg. We were able to take her to Lehigh Valley the next morning to the Orthopedic Center because that is what they do there. There was a place to take our daughter to get the care that she needed. Her toddler fracture has healed. She is okay. But it only reminds me of those moments when someone is not okay. I cannot stand by and let go this opportunity to give Geisinger what they need to make sure that they are expanding their operations, expanding their emergency room, expanding the beds, making sure that we have the care here in Scranton for families when something much more serious than a broken bone happens. I won't belabor it. I've said this many times in many different ways, but I do believe, as a city, it is absolutely imperative that we give Geisinger what they need on the land that they already owned, in a place that has been a hospital center for 120 years, longer than any of us has been alive, so that we make sure that we are good stewards of healthcare and our economic development and our strength as a city for the next 120 years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Representative Bridget Kozarowski.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here with us tonight. This is a crowded venue because it's an important issue. I know that we've been here before, and we've spoken on behalf of the hospital before. I've advocated on behalf of the hospital before. But before I start, I do want to make sure that we all in this room, whether you are supportive or not supportive of this amendment, no one is not for healthcare. Nobody in this room is not for access to healthcare. And certainly, here in the Commonwealth, we are suffering with closures of hospitals and access to care. That's not what we are arguing, discussing, hoping to get to a yes vote again tonight. We are talking about access to care and access to a hospital that's been here, like the mayor said, 125 years. The access to care that we have for our community, especially a trauma center, is essential. And travel time during a trauma is something that people and patients don't have -- don't have time to do. The outcome is usually catastrophic. For the last two years, the group that I work with, the state and local legislators, Representative Mullins, Representative Donahue, Senator Flynn, our local foundations, the governor's office, Drew Popisch, who works on behalf of Governor Shapiro, we have been laser-focused on this because it is no secret that both the CMC Hospital and what's called Regional, Regional Hospital on Jefferson Avenue, a couple blocks down the hill, is in a crisis situation right now. Tenor Health is here. They have come to purchase, and I'm very hopeful, cautiously optimistic, that they have a successful outcome. But when you hear about the service lines, and especially trauma, OB-GYN, NICU, cardiac, and the emergency room, you know, Geisinger has been a wonderful partner to us in terms of knowing that there is an unstable health system on Jefferson Avenue, and they have made steps to make sure that they have access for those patients. Those are vulnerable patients that do not have time to travel. We cannot send a mom and a baby in crisis, a trauma in crisis, a cardiac in crisis. We do not have time to send them down the turnpike to Philadelphia. We have done really well here in Lackawanna County, in Scranton, for many years. We've had three wonderful community hospitals. A little history, there's some nostalgickness to the Community Medical Center, GCMC on Mulberry Street. I know the hospital is 125 years old. I brought my 84-year-old father with me tonight. He's sitting in the middle there. And my father is a practicing orthopedic surgeon. And in 1974, my father and his team started that trauma center up on Mulberry Street. He's served his entire career at CMC Hospital. I'm a nurse. I'm a registered nurse. I moved back here to town in 2001, and I worked at CMC Hospital in the PACU, the recovery room. The hospital is a marvelous place for care, but the hospital is old. The infrastructure is old. Patients and equipment and is growing, and the hospital has not been able to do such. It's landlocked. They are doing everything they can up there to expand and take care of our patients, but they need room. And I'm hopeful that everybody here will be able to know that. We are not talking about -- we are talking about healthcare. And again, you know, I had the -- I listened on the last meeting you had, and there was a Dr. Kevra who spoke. And he said, "This is not about healthcare, and we are not against access to healthcare." But this is about, you know, our neighbors and where we live. And I think that Geisinger will be a good partner in being transparent and having people be part of the expansion team, being good partners with the neighbors. They understand they're expanding in a neighborhood where people live and use the park and, you know, enjoy the summertime in this area. They are sensitive to that. And I do believe Geisinger will be good partners. But we need Geisinger to be able to expand and be able to take care of our patient population. We have an aging population here. It's growing. And again, the healthcare crisis is within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This is not unique to Scranton. We need to be supportive of expansion and access. I'm hopeful that Tenor Health does survive with Regional, and they have a successful outcome. But if it does not, we must make sure that we support Geisinger because they're going to have to take care of that entire volume of patients that seek care at Regional at Geisinger-CMC. So I'm hopeful that we have an outcome tonight that is positive, and we support the expansion. It's for the betterment of our community. So thank you for listening. Thank you for having us here tonight, and hopefully we come to a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Kozarowski. Representative Kyle Donahue.
Thank you, counsel. It's good to be back. Views a little different on this side. I just want to offer some cautious perspective on GCMC's proposed expansion, recognizing both the potential benefits and the concerns that have been raised by the neighbors. I do think it's important to point out that when counsel first took up this just about three years ago, the city of Scranton had three hospitals, three emergency rooms. Today, we have two ERs and two hospitals with Regional Moses operating under one license in two separate buildings. Our local healthcare system is under real strain. We're also navigating a period of uncertainty in healthcare on the statewide and federal levels. Federal Medicaid cuts and financial pressures on hospitals statewide will absolutely affect our region, ensuring that GCMC has the capacity to operate effectively as part of preparing for that reality. But it's also important that expansion comes with clear plans, transparency, and accountability. Regional Hospital Moses-Taylor have struggled for years just to keep their doors and service lines open. Service lines that include labor and delivery at Moses and cardiology at Regional. We're days away from closing multiple times over the past 12 months. But our local healthcare foundations, in coordination with Lackawanna County State delegation, the governor's office, and the mayor, created a working group that stepped up big time to keep these service lines open as we continue to buy more runway in search of a long-term solution. We watch services shift or leave the area completely, staffing levels fluctuate, and uncertainty become part of everyday operations for the people who work at both Regional and Moses. The nurses, doctors, and staff at Regional and Moses continue to show remarkable commitment under incredibly different conditions -- difficult conditions, excuse me, to provide care that the residents of the city of Scranton and Lackawanna County rely on every day. But still, that instability has affected patients and the broader community. I am cautiously optimistic that the deal for Tenor Health to acquire Regional and Moses gets to the finish line, and that Tenor can continue to provide high-quality healthcare services that our residents have relied on for generations. But I also cannot stand before you today and confidently say that either Regional or Moses will still be here five years from now. In that context, GCMC's emergency department plays an increasingly critical role. As the only trauma center in Lackawanna County, it's often operating at or above capacity. The current pressure on Regional's ER only intensifies the load on GCMC, and that's something we can't ignore. An expansion could help that pressure by adding treatment space, reducing bottlenecks, and improving emergency response times. That said, supporting this project should not mean giving it a blank check. Major hospital expansion comes with legitimate concerns about zoning, traffic, construction impacts, and how the surrounding neighborhood will be affected. Residents deserve to have those issues taken seriously, and the hospital should be expected to provide clear, transparent answers. I will do everything in my power, along with Representatives Kozarowski, Haddock, Mullins, Senator Flynn, Mayor Cognetti, this counsel, the incoming counsel, to make sure that the promises that Geisinger has made throughout this process are kept, and they start to become good neighbors by listening to their concerns and doing anything they can to find common ground with the residents who call this neighborhood home. My support for this proposal is measured. I see the need created by the pressure on both GCMC and Regional Moses, but I believe we must move forward carefully, with oversight, with community input, and with a commitment to accountability. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration in continuing to prioritize the well-being of our residents and our healthcare workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Donahue. Next, Julie Byerly.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Julie Byerly, and I live in the Hill section. I walk in the park at NEOG most days for exercise, and I'm very fond of our neighborhood and community. My job is that I'm the dean of the medical school at Geisinger Commonwealth School of Medicine, and now we've added nursing education, genetic counseling, and some other health professions. And we call ourselves Geisinger College of Health Sciences, and I have the honor of serving as the president. One of the reasons I took that job is because I was invited to that beautiful building in downtown, and I was informed about the community support for what we were trying to do at the medical school. You know, we are working really hard to address the dramatic need for doctors, nurses, and other health professionals to serve the people of this region. We're fulfilling the dreams of our founders. In fact, we've graduated more than 1,000 physicians. In fact, we've graduated more than 1,000 physicians already from our medical school. To get them to stay here in Scranton, to serve our people, and to have the appointments and care available for those of us who need that care, we have to have modern, high-quality facilities to attract those health professionals. Our physician graduates can go anywhere. They're recruited all over the place. They are outstanding doctors, and they have multiple job offers when they finish their trainings. I want them to stay here in Scranton. Scranton has to show that we want them to stay here in Scranton and to show that we need to allow Geisinger to invest in facilities that will benefit us all. Geisinger is a tremendous supporter of our medical school and our College of Health Sciences. In fact, the medical school would have had to close without Geisinger's significant financial investment in our students and our education pathways. Geisinger wants to serve Scranton well. We at the school want to serve Scranton well. I would ask you that you please let that happen by supporting and voting in favor of this proposed legislation. It is important for our school. It is important for our students. It is important for the future health professionals that we want to attract to this area, and is important to me and my family who live in the Hill section. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Brushevers?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you again to support what we know is a critical need in Lackawanna County and to express our strong support for the mayor's proposed zoning amendment. We strongly support this amendment because more and more people in this community come to GCMC every day, including needing emergency services and acute inpatient care. We continue to remain supportive of our neighborhood hospital systems, but the uncertain future of healthcare services in this community gives us profound concern, and we have done all we can to expand our capabilities within the hospital's current walls. While we're proud of the excellent care we deliver at Geisinger Community Medical Center, our clinicians and staff are desperately constrained by space and resources, as anyone who has recently visited the hospital can appreciate. GCMC is a regional destination for trauma services and critical care as well as acute care. We are treating patients not only across Lackawanna and neighboring counties, but also throughout the northern tier because of our capabilities in heart attack and stroke care. As our aging population and growing regional demand continues to outpace our hospital capacity, we are tirelessly focused on making our patient experience and clinical care the best that it can be given the circumstances. Just to be clear, we have not stopped improving our capabilities within the existing hospital. We have added more labor and delivery services, are creating a NICU, expanding our emergency department, supplementing our imaging resources with state-of-the-art MRI, adding additional medical transport, more inpatient beds, and regional support to assure that care is available when it's needed. But in spite of that progress we've made, we have yet to create more clinical, enough clinical space to meet the region's demands, and there is no ability to do that within the existing hospital and constraints of the present zoning on our adjacent property. We appreciate the efforts of our neighbors to meet throughout this process. We pledge to continue to meet, share thoughts, and when possible, incorporate their feedback into our project. If given the opportunity to expand, we would have the bulk of our design work ahead of us. We remain committed to collaborating when we begin focusing resources on designing the expansion in detail. We strongly urge you to vote today to adopt the mayor's proposed zoning amendment so that we can have the zoning required to deliver the additional healthcare services that this community desperately needs. The longer we wait, the more difficult the healthcare experience will become in our community, and I thank you for the time and attention and care that you all have committed to this amendment as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Nick Erevante?
Hi. My name is Nick Erevante. I'm an interventional structural cardiologist. I work out of Geisinger Community Medical Center. And if I knew I was coming here today, I would have dressed a little nicer. I'm sorry about that. I was asked to come and talk about how, basically what the current state of the cardiovascular service line is in Scranton. I don't know if everybody's aware, but historically, there was four interventional cardiologists at Regional Hospital, four interventional cardiologists at CMC, and between the eight people that we took care of, the heart attacks that were coming in from Scranton and the surrounding areas. In the last six months, there's basically three of us now. And so, one at Regional who's full-time, and then my partner and I at CMC. We did have another guy that was working, but he has decided to transition out of the area. A lot of the issues that we're dealing with right now is that there is a tremendous amount of volume that has to be taken because you can't, you know, you can't plan a heart attack, so you have to be available 24/7. How we're doing it right now is I'm either on-call or on-post-call, and that's basically it. So we're always available to take care of the people that need being taken care of. Odds are, if you have a heart attack in Scranton, you're going to see me. And so, you know, we have to be there. We have to be available. But in terms of what we're dealing with right now, it's just very, very short on space, right? We have more simultaneous emergencies than we've ever had. You know, I was a medical student at CMC. I was a resident at CMC, a fellow at CMC. It's where I wanted to practice when I came out. And the issue is twofold, right? One is a space issue. The other is recruiting people that want to come through and practice here, right? So for those of you that don't know, it takes seven years after medical school to train an interventional cardiologist, and so there's only 290 graduates a year. So we're looking at recruiting five people to take the place of the five people that have left in the last six months. It's recruiting over 2%, 3% of the graduates that are coming out right now, and they have to want to come here. They have a lot of opportunities to go a lot of different places, and so we're running into, we're running into those problems. Additionally, our cath labs are, they're not meeting the demand of the volume that is coming through. And so there's nothing we can do about that. You come in with a heart attack, we're going to, you know, triage you the best we possibly can, but we are limited on space. We're limited on, you know, where we can put people. When I first started here, the amount of procedures we did and the complexity of the procedures we did was not nearly what we're doing now. It used to be that you had to go out of town for certain things. Now you don't have to go out of town for anything. We can take care of everything here, and we have very, very good outcomes. But at the same time, we are burning the candle at both ends, and it's very difficult to manage everything we have with the resources that we have. I understand that people don't want things to change. I understand that, you know, things have to be done in a certain way, but we're past the point, I think, of it becoming a problem. I mean, it is a problem right now, and I don't know, even if everything, you know, were to be fixed today, right? It would still, we're still looking at a problem from a cardiovascular service line on scale of the pandemic, if not larger, until we can find a place to put people and find a place to recruit people. So this is a problem that I'm seeing. You know, it is a life-or-death issue, and so I just think everybody should be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Ghoulie?
Good evening, counsel. Joe Ghoulie from Scranton. Healthcare in the city of Scranton and Lackawanna County and the region, it's in critical condition. It is so bad, I can't even imagine. I know one of the councilmen even up here recently had an experience where he had to wait time and time again. When you go to Geisinger, it's a great hospital, but they have very limited resources. You can go into the emergency room any night of the week and just hang out there waiting to get taken care of. A good friend of mine, she's 90 years old, I'm going to repeat what I said last time. I took her up there. We waited four hours before they took her back for a CAT scan. She got the CAT scan. They came back two hours later. They immediately moved her into the ER and prepped her for surgery. This is horrific. What more, what concerns me even more is the outcome of the Tenor acquisition. I really think they would have bought it by now. It's a very rural hospital. I'm not as optimistic as other people. So if they close Moses, and this is where I get really concerned, what are we going to do for the births? I'm glad that I heard more birthing units, and rooms are being, you know, taken care of over there. I guess my next question to Geisinger is I hope we're going to have pediatric rooms because we do not. It happened here right now.
Joe, I'm the speaker.
I would hope that we are going to have pediatric rooms in the new hospital. I think it's absolutely imperative. I had a sick child years ago. It was extremely difficult, and I think we need more birthing units, as I said, at Geisinger, and I think we need more pediatric, you know, rooms. I think the most disturbing thing to me is for a parent to lose a child because we don't have the necessary care here, or for a child to lose a parent because, as this cardiologist just said, we don't have enough cardiologists here. This is extremely disturbing. It's probably one of the most, biggest issues that we have in our region right now, and I don't think the general public knows it. But if you are part of it and you go up there on a Saturday night and just see all of the people in the Geisinger medical, or in the emergency room, it is unbelievable. For Mrs. Heck, well, she didn't mention her name, but for the woman I took up there, they had to move someone out of the room she was in, and they were in the hallway, and the hallway was packed with people. Well, the other rooms, because she was being prepped for surgery, well, the other emergency rooms were full. This is nuts. For us not to support Geisinger is absolutely ludicrous. They've given so much to the area, including the medical school. But I'm going to end it like this. This is life and death we're talking about here. Nothing more, nothing less. We're talking about rooms. I don't care about economic development. I don't care about, you know, the issues with the neighbors. Let's get that worked out. I don't care about anything except beds and healthcare. And we need it, and we need it right now because sooner than later, I believe that the other two hospitals will close. And I'll leave it at one note. The last time I personally had to go to the ER of Mercy, it was disturbing. One doctor, pretty much filthy dirty. But on the other hand, my daughter had just had twins up at Moses Taylor, and it was a great experience. The NICU was right next to the birthing unit, which one of the twins had to go to for a very short time. But if they close, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? Give Geisinger what they need, give the community what they need, give the children what we need, and give the parents what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mary Beth Michaelaekchak?
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Michaelaekchak, and I live in the 400 block of Arthur Avenue for 43 years. And why did I move there? Because the section of town is beautiful. And I cannot understand how you could vote yes tonight on a concept of a plan. You don't have any solid plans, and I don't understand why we can't extend this until we do. If you vote yes, the concept of the plan can change tomorrow to 100-foot garages again like they originally wanted to. So I'm asking you tonight to please vote no so that a compromise can be met with the neighbors and Geisinger and work together. But once that's granted, that's basically it, and buildings will go up to 100%, 100 feet. And please don't ruin our neighborhood. Let's try to compromise with Geisinger and come up with a good height that's going to work for both of us. And another thing, too, maybe Geisinger should look into expanding in other areas of Scranton so that it's not just congested in the Hill because you have people coming from Luzerne County, Lackawanna County. I kept saying Stafford Avenue, by the old mountain view, raise it and put a beautiful state-of-the-art building up. You've got people that will be able to access it easy. There will be no traffic problems. Get right off of 81 coming from Luzerne County or from Lackawanna County. I just don't understand why we have to be sandwiched in the Hill. They could do clinics up there at a lower height and expand elsewhere, and everybody will still get good quality care if it's a few blocks away or a few miles away. And that's basically it. So I ask to please vote no so that we can compromise and work with the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Kovach?
Good evening. Scranton residents and city council members, I stand before you as Anthony Kovach, a registered nurse with close to two decades of healthcare experience and employee of Geisinger Health System. I serve in care management, and I also work per diem in the emergency department. I am not here just as a nurse, but also as a family member who has experienced the impact of healthcare. I understand your concerns about Geisinger's expansion and its current location. I know that you may see large buildings as an eyesore and worry about corporation encroaching on your residential areas. However, I urge you to consider the desperate need for this expansion from a different perspective, a perspective of a patient and a perspective of a caregiver. Just a few months ago, my father received treatment and appointments at the cancer center at the hospital. Today, that care is provided up in Dixon City, requiring us to travel further for services that were once under one roof. Other services have also been relocated due to the lack of physical space. Furthermore, the emergency department, once able to sustain our community alongside two other hospitals, is now very much overwhelmed with a critical need for beds. When you look at the building in your neighborhood, I want you to see more than a corporation. I want you to see my face. I want you to see the face of some of my coworkers, my friends, and my colleagues who work tirelessly for this community. Geisinger is not a building. I am Geisinger. They are Geisinger. We are your neighbors, and we're dedicated to providing the best care possible with the resources that we have. You have an incredible asset in your backyard. In moments of crisis, whether it be a heart attack, a stroke, or trauma, time is of the essence. As a nurse, I took a pledge to devote myself to the welfare of my patients. I want you to fully recover and return to the life that you love. Please allow us to expand, not just for your sake, but for the sake of my loved ones and for everyone here who wants to provide the best care possible. I hope you never find yourself inside the walls of Geisinger. But if you do, I promise to be there for you. I promise to ensure you receive the highest level of compassion and care. I will assist, as well as my fellow people, in directing your care to the utmost dedication and compassion we do every day. Thank you for considering my plea. Together, we can ensure that Geisinger continues to be a beacon of hope and healing for our community.
Thank you. Srivanta? Nick?
Hi there. Thank you firstly for saying my name right. My name is Sri. It's very nice to meet you all, and thank you for giving me the time. So, you know, I wear several different hats, and I'll talk about the first one and maybe three total today. I'm a mom. I'm a member of the family NAIC, and I have twins that are 10 years old. And with us live my mother-in-law, who's And with us live my mother-in-law, who's elderly, and my brother-in-law, who has muscular dystrophy, and my husband. We all live in that house and our dog, who also needs care, but obviously not at Geisinger. But, you know, every time there's trouble with one of these folks where my mother-in-law fell recently and fractured her spine or my brother-in-law's scapular artery ripped and he required to be seen in or my son stuck his foot out the golf cart and had this ginormous open area on his leg. Each time, I was able to come to rely on the hospital system here, specifically Geisinger, for my family to be taken care of. I'm also a physician. It's Dr. Sri Lata Naik. I am a pulmonary critical care and sleep physician at Geisinger and I have been for over nine and a half years. And I also specifically practice in a very niche area that very few people in the country do. I manage patients on home ventilation devices that are very frail. And as much as we could say, oh, my gosh, there's other doctors, other hospitals. The problem with that though is that the type of sophistication of care that we provide, that I provide, that many of my colleagues provide, is not available in most centers around the country. I know we are an old building, but we do not use old technology or techniques. And unfortunately, when my patients from clinic get sick, they are too frail. They can't get on the car and drive two hours to go be seen somewhere else. The amount of oxygen alone that's required for them to travel, they can't carry enough tanks for that, you know? And, you know, we talked about why care needs to be sandwiched right here in the city and not elsewhere. And I'll cite some examples as a physician that are fully hypothetical. Our patients, imagine yourself where my clinic patients need to come into the hospital. They're not going to want to be taken care of by another physician who doesn't understand their disease state. And so for that reason, our patients often come right back to us, even though the clinic is in a separate location than our hospital. They come here and not to another health system, for example. Even though there are many amazing systems in both this area and further areas we can drive. And then if you can imagine how, you know, Tony had mentioned how some of the services have now been relocated to Dixon City. One of them is radiation. And imagine a young patient with an airway obstructing tumor that is in our hospital and cannot receive the type of therapy here because some of the therapies are allocated elsewhere. And so we can certainly build, you know, other buildings elsewhere. But there's a reason why care does need to be consolidated for certain specialties. And these are things that I worry about for my patients and unfortunately face many of the times. And my third hat that I'll talk about today is I am director for pulmonary and critical care for GCMC, for Geisinger Community Medical Center. And before coming here, I was in our ICU with my partner, Alyssa, who's up here. And part of the things that we were reviewing is what many folks here have brought up, which is space. And yes, my colleagues are amazing. They do fun things that other people, very complex things other people cannot do. And they fixate on the quality of care. I know every time there's a new article, we think about how to implement these strategies to improve care here. And we measure those numbers and we look for improved outcomes for our patients. And unfortunately, even with attracting new doctors, we don't have that space. And right before we came here, the crisis we were trying to avert is that there were five inbound critical patients and we had no place to put them. And if you can imagine a loved one that's sick and, you know, we've had to ship patients out to other campuses. Imagine a patient going to Danville because we don't have that ICU beds here. And now your loved one is on a ventilator and you have to drive an hour and a half each day to see them in another location. And this is why these services need to be consolidated. And this is why we need that space. And I love looking out the window and seeing the park and seeing other spaces. But, you know, some degree of priority should be taken for how sick our patients are. Thank you so much for your time. I hope everyone here has a great holiday season and everyone's health as well. But if it's not, we're here to take care of you. We just need to be given the resources to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Virgil Argenta. Had in here? Jean McDonough? No? Joan Hodawanis?
Joan Hodawanis, Scranton. I'm very fortunate as a veteran, getting most of my care at the VA in Wilkes-Barre. But when they lack the resources to serve me, they usually send me to Geisinger's facilities here in Scranton. And I must say, the care has always been excellent. So I really don't want to shoot myself in the foot tonight. That wouldn't be a good idea for me. But I think last week, Lee Morgan made a statement which made me think about, here we have a facility built decades ago, landlocked in a place where it was appropriate in the early 20th century. But as we move forward into the 21st century, is no longer appropriate. And I'm wondering if we should not be thinking of a short-term strategy to address the emergency needs we have today and a separate long-term strategy. For example, is there a Plan B that we have as a community in the event Moses Taylor and Regional bite the dust? And that's a possibility, you know? Whether you vote yea or nay tonight, I would love to see somewhere, sometime in the early next year, a town hall meeting looking at the long-term healthcare needs of this community. Because I tell you right now, 10 years, 20 years from now, Geisinger is going to have to come back here and they're probably going to need even more space, especially if they're the last hospital standing in Scranton. Because they serve all of Lackawanna County. So that's one thing. When this issue first came up, I remember seeing it on the agenda and I said to myself, didn't we just spend months and months on the zoning ordinance not that long ago? You know, what has changed? And I listened to some of the answers that were proposed. And I don't know, some of it didn't really ring true. Why did it have to be introduced and passed before the end of the year? What about the residents in that area who have lived there for decades, paid taxes, obeyed all the laws, played by all the rules? Okay? And now they're facing this decision that they have very little time to react to. If anything called for a town hall meeting, this did. And then someone pointed out to me, do you think there is a political aspect to this situation? And I said, well, what do you mean? And they said, well, you know, this is a democratic town. And there is a personality on the board of trustees at Geisinger, Virginia McGregor. And I don't think that that is the motivating factor. But that should be mentioned and addressed and put down. Because I don't think that really is happening. I don't know. Somebody said to me, well, did, you know, Geisinger contribute to the mayor's campaign? I said, I don't know. Went to the library, didn't find any campaign finance statements, so I don't know. But I think that this is such an urgent, important situation that you need a short-term strategy to address the fact that you've got too many patients crowded in the ER and not enough patient beds and everything else. And you've got a residential area who want their rights respected. That's one issue. But you need to look down the road 10, 20, 25 years. Maybe Lee Morgan is right. Maybe you need a long-term strategy to build a 21st century hospital in an area in Scranton which won't interfere with residents and which is accessible by your transportation network. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Jean McDonough?
Jean McDonough, Hill Section resident. I'm here to discuss the CMC expansion tonight. Say thank you to everybody. Special thanks to the CMC lady auxiliary, Lackawanna County Historical Society and the Lackawanna County Library System for much of the information I'm going to highlight tonight. Let's set the record straight right off the bat. Geisinger is an $8 billion corporation that is now tenor health, based in Washington DC that is owned by California-based Kaiser Permanente, who had a net profit of $3.2 billion in the second quarter of 2025. For 60 years, 20, and as recent as 2023, CMC Hospital has been coming to the city every few years trying to expand. Time and time again told no, but they continue to buy properties pushing the issue forward, pockmarking our neighborhood, reducing our property values while increasing the tax load on Scranton residents. Nobody wants to live near a hospital. CMC was originally a 45-bed maternity hospital built on the main thoroughfare to New York. The route was removed 60 years back and now CMC is sitting at the end of a dead-end street across the street from Scranton's Crown Jewel Park and in the middle of a residential neighborhood. With its ambulances and police cars lining the street, aka the ER war zone, as it's called, this is not the original intent of a maternity ward that was established in our neighborhood. In 1967, CMC was gifted 29 acres on Morgan Highway to relocate to the landlocked hospital. They knew in 1967 they were landlocked. Additionally, a joint study was done with recommendations on placement of the hospital. The study was never made public. And CMC started slowly purchasing properties quietly throughout the neighborhood. With the, according to the hospital administrator in 1967, residential Hill Section isn't interested in commercial or industrial development. CMC has no thought of using urban renewal process approached to obtaining these properties. However, this has been a self-fulfilling prophecy over the last 60 years. It's exactly what they've done. They have built this themselves. They are a cantrous tumor eating away at our beautiful neighborhood, all to save a few dollars. They should be building it elsewhere. As far as being a good neighbor when provided approval for the 1982 helipad, under the condition that ambulance helicopters will use a flight path which is parallel to 81, taking a 90-degree turn to land, this was adhered to until Geisinger came along. And now our complaints are responded to like we are crazy people. We never heard of such a thing as what I was told by the Geisinger pad manager. Is a dead-end residential neighborhood the right place for the city's busiest ER? At a minimum, CMC is 1.1 miles from the nearest highway with a minimum of four lights, but can go as high as six to eight lights with seven stop signs. We hear every second counts. How is this poor location benefiting the dying patient? CMC owns two properties less than a quarter mile from the Central City Expressway that are zoned commercial. I believe it is time for CMC to face the fact, we don't want you in our neighborhood. You have not been a good or honest neighbor bringing noise, patients with mental issues and crime to our neighborhood. The irony is you just created your own police force, but what have you done for the neighbors? The request for rezoning is not about healthcare. It is about saving a corporation in California and Washington money. According to, they're paid handsomely for their services. In 2023, Geisinger had a net profit of between, I'll go with the conservative, $267 million. It's pretty good for a nonprofit. Top five individuals walked away with $15 million in 2023. The top two people in northeastern Pennsylvania walked away with just over $1 million. We'll also note that they spent just over, under $1 million in lobbying fees in 2023. Corporations have one purpose, make money and save money. Marketing is just to make us feel good. I should know, I'll skip that. I've heard that this is not about buildings or neighborhood. It's about healthcare. It's not about healthcare. We need healthcare. We all know that. We have lots of patients here. My suggestion is turn it into a nursing home. Move the hospital. Hey, did pretty good. Please stop voting for the corporations. Listen to the people. We've been saying it for 60 years. We don't want it there. Put it where it belongs. Every time you guys change, and I'm told that this should really before, go before the zoning board, not city council. We shouldn't be giving approval for change in zoning by city council. It should come from the zoning board. At this point, I say thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. That's all for our sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to speak?
Doris Kloski, Scranton. Good evening, council. I'm here as a resident affected by the zone change. Let me be clear, there's not one of us in this room that does not want healthcare in shorter waits in the emergency room. Geisinger has told us they have already addressed their ER problem by sending equipment to Olive Street and taking that area on the first floor to add the rooms. The ER and pediatrics are not part of this expansion. The 75-foot building that they plan to put across from my home will house something like 21 or 24 beds. I don't remember the exact count. Is that a 75-foot include the havoc? I think that's how you pronounce it. The rest will be 75 feet of parking garages. Or is that really the plan? They admit this is a concept and it could change. A caucus, they said, they have no plans at all for the 200 block. Two years ago, they needed two 100-foot parking garages, one on the 400 and one on the 200. If it was okay to walk from the hospital from the 200, then why isn't it now? And why can't they open the Linden Street door that the employees use when they wouldn't have to change, then they wouldn't have to change zoning spread out? With lower heights, I think I messed that up. Okay. They could spread the zoning out then with, or the, the, what do you call it? The garage is out. They could make them lower and they could spread them into the two blocks. With lower heights, if you need more, then you go for the variance. Now, according to my sources, the tenure deal went through and will take over January 1st. Why is that under wraps? Or maybe they wouldn't care if insurance reimbursements were lower for pediatrics and be willing to take care of our kids locally. Geisinger admits they have to build trust. Well, you need to build that trust before you get a blank check to do whatever pleases you. I beg you to vote no to a blanket zone change. You knew all summer you were planning this and never included the neighbors because you didn't want to. We were given no time for meaningful discussion with the hospital. You need to study history to predict the future. If they couldn't be trusted to keep their word then, why now? Here is a list of things that they could do if they get a blanket zone change to Civic. Unfortunately, I forgot my reading glasses. But I'm only going to say some of the pertinent because there's a whole lot of them like offices and all different kinds of things. But a heliport. A cemetery. Gee, if it's zoned on my side of the street, maybe my kids can bury me in the backyard. A crematorium. They can wheel the patients that died right over if they decide to build that. Basically, the heliport and the crematorium are two biggest things. But they could do it. Now, I know someone's going to say, well, they have to go for special exemption. But hey, they were supposed to go for a variance and they didn't have to. So who knows if they have to really go for a special exemption? And before, that's what I was going to say, okay. So I'm begging, actually begging, not to just give them a blanket thing where they can change and just decide, okay, it's now 100 feet and we're going to change their mind. We don't need to put the 21 beds. I would love to see a pediatric wing across the street from my house. I wouldn't mind looking at that at all. I don't think it has to be 75 feet where there's no sun coming. And that's if they stick to 75 feet. And that's if they're not putting stuff on top of that 75. And that's if they're not putting stuff on top of that 75 feet. Who knows? If you tell them, "Okay, you've got 100 feet to play with," they could just say, "Changed our mind," because that's what they've been doing since this whole thing started. They keep changing their mind. First, it was going to be a building with underground parking. Then they changed their mind. Then it's going to be two 100... At that time, 120 feet, but then said they would do 100 feet. And the whole 200 and the whole 400. Then they changed their mind. So now they're saying, "Well, we don't have plans to go. We have a concept." They could change their mind.
Thank you.
My name's Laura Augustini, and I'm here as president of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association. I have a couple of notes and a couple of things that I'd like to state. Why is this being rushed? I think that's what the biggest problem for most of us is. This is something that was talked about two years ago, two and a half years ago. We went through a whole rigamarole with it, and all of a sudden, it's being revisited, and it has to be passed before the end of the year. What about giving it time so that they can come up with that community benefit agreement so that the neighbors, the neighborhood and the residents of the Hill Section have something concrete in their hands that they can hold Geisinger to? Right now, we can't hold Geisinger to anything. I don't care what they said at the caucus last week. "Oh, we promise not to go over 75 feet." Guess what? We have all seen what they promise and what they actually do. They've promised to put the cigarette butt holder back at the bus shelter. That hasn't happened, and that's just a small item. But Geisinger is asking the residents of the Hill Section to trust them, but they haven't done anything to get that trust. The other thing is, again, it's being rushed through. I don't understand that when the zoning board has been before this council and met with council on several occasions requesting clarification to the zoning ordinance over two years ago, or at least a year ago, and none of those proposals or clarifications have come before this council to be voted on. Some very specific items that they were looking for was clarification regarding parking, clarification regarding the square footage of apartments, clarification regarding strobe lights. The zoning board went through the zoning ordinance, and they're the ones who have to hear the comments and make the decisions on this zoning ordinance. And yet, when they came to council and the administration asking for some clarification or amendments to the zoning ordinance, it hasn't happened yet. And those meetings occurred over a year ago. So why does this have to be rushed through when items that the zoning board, who have a huge stake in the zoning ordinance, when those haven't been addressed? I am also concerned that if Geisinger is able to make a request for a zoning change to the ordinance in the Hill Section, that any other corporation can do so in the rest of the city, including Marywood University for Green Ridge, St. Joseph's Center, any of these other locations in the other parts of the city. Well, now, well, Geisinger got it. Why can't Marywood get it? Why can't the university get it? That's a big concern of mine. I keep hearing that the sky is falling. Geisinger told us that two years ago, three years ago, when we were looking at the ordinance then. Still there. If you're really concerned about Moses and regional failing, well, why don't you take over one of those buildings? Move some of your services down the block and use those buildings that have ready-made staff, ready-made infrastructure, and use that. And that would maybe solve two of the problems that we have. Geisinger also closed their OB floor and their NICU in 2007 and 2010 because they weren't making enough money. It was that simple. Now, they want to bring it back. Well, what happens if they don't make enough money? Are they going to close it? And then what are they going to do with this space? If this is zone civic and Geisinger changes their mind, could they sell it to somebody else? Once the zoning is put in place, it's there forever. It doesn't stay with Geisinger. It goes with the property. And that's a huge concern as well. At least with Geisinger, we're looking at having improved healthcare come in. That's what all of us want. None of us, as been said over and over again, is opposed to healthcare improvements. We just want to maintain the character of the neighborhood and maintain the integrity of the zoning ordinance as it was passed in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Teresa Cortano. I live on the 400 block of Wheeler Avenue. I'm also a cancer survivor. 10 years ago, I was diagnosed with breast cancer, and I was able to get the treatment that I needed from Geisinger. I have been at Geisinger facilities for once every three months at least for the last 10 years. I've had multiple surgeries. I've had multiple treatments. I'm also faculty at the University of Scranton, and I live within walking distance of GCMC's emergency room. Without fail, at least once a semester, I am walking through the alley in my pajamas at midnight to meet a student who fell and got a concussion, or partied a little too hard, or broke their leg, and sit with them for two hours, three hours in the emergency room at Geisinger while their parents are driving in from Staten Island or New Jersey or someplace else. I love having Geisinger in my neighborhood. I also very much love my home. I love having access to the alley behind my house. I bought my house purposefully in 2018 because it had access through the alley and not on the hill through the front, and because it had a first-floor bathroom and a space on the first floor to make a bedroom. Last year, my parents, who are now 75 and 80 years old, moved in with me because my father, who is a 100% service-related, 100% disabled veteran, Vietnam veteran, who is a paratrooper, has Alzheimer's, and it became too hard for my mother to take care of him on her own. So my parents moved into my house. The reason they were able to do that partly is because we have access to the alley behind my house. My father can walk with a cane from my back door to the car behind the house in the alley. He cannot absolutely walk down the stairs in the front of the house. Within the next two years, I am certain he will be wheelchair-bound. He can't walk further than the car. We have a travel wheelchair that we take him to his treatments and things like that in. If I lose access to that alley, my parents can no longer comfortably live with me. If the alley becomes a space where there is too much traffic, where there is too much noise, where there are too many people, my elderly parents, who suffer from things like my father has PTSD, are going to become very uncomfortable living in my home. It's not just about eyesores. It's not just about being afraid of change. It's not just about wanting the neighborhood to stay the way that it is. We live in our homes. Our families live in our homes. I love the healthcare that I get from Geisinger. I'm very grateful I did not have to travel to New York to get cancer treatment. I'm also very grateful that I live in Scranton in a community where my parents can move and be comfortable and feel happy in their neighborhood, and I have a space where they can live out the end of their lives. They know the goal is for them to die in my home. Hopefully, it's not anytime soon, but that is the goal. Voting tonight to allow Geisinger to do what they want without having to be in conversation with the community puts my ability to care for my parents in my home at risk. I am not opposed to Geisinger expanding. I am not opposed to securing healthcare in Scranton. I have benefited from it greatly over the last decade-plus. I want to be able to remain in conversation with Geisinger as they make changes to the neighborhood that I love. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marsha Johnson. I'm a resident in the Hill Section. I like talking to you four gentlemen up here because, Mr. Schmerl, you put a new furnace in my home on the 400 block of Harrison Avenue. I sold that house, and I chose to rent right on Arthur Avenue. So I live on the 400 block of Arthur, which I love. And I'm a 25-year... I'm a health and phys ed teacher for the Scranton School District. And Mr. King, you know I'm pro-runner. I love movement. I'm very pro-health. I'm very much interested in seeing Geisinger expand. And I think that when I come here tonight, I bring a personal story in that the expansion is necessary, but not at a 100-foot, a 75-foot garage when I open my back door. I refuse to live in a home where I'm going to be looking at a garage, and that's why I'm here tonight. But I went to the ER with my friend. This was a couple of weeks ago. He had broken his neck, and we were in the, you know, not a room in the ER, but in the hallway. So for six hours, we waited, and we found out that his C7 vertebrae was broken. And obviously, he stayed the night. And he was told that Hanger, a company that Geisinger works with, would give him the proper neck brace to go home. So he was told he would probably stay one night. Well, he got about two different neck braces from Hanger that were inappropriately fitted for him. The man stayed for seven days at Geisinger and left with $110,000 bill. I do not have a lot of faith in the Geisinger medical program. My sister just got a double mastectomy. She got that at Geisinger. She was tested positive for the BRCA gene. I asked the doctor, "When will her ovaries come out?" Soon, soon. Nothing happened. Geisinger did not contact my sister, and we had to take my sister down to Philadelphia to have her ovaries removed. So that's two personal stories that I have. My son was born at Geisinger, and that was in 2001, 10-pound baby, great. But what's happening now is the ER is unbelievable. We had a stabbing there. We had police cars. We have arguments there. It's not like... You can hear everything on the 400 block. It's not good. So you put a... You expand, and you put a 75, 100-foot garage right there with a ton of traffic. I am moving. I am leaving the Hill Section, and I am not going to stay in the city of Scranton because I don't understand why we can't keep the beauty of the Hill Section and expand a little healthcare, and we cannot have 100-foot, a 75-foot garage. One building is not going to solve all these health problems that we're hearing. So I'm begging you to please vote no. Number one, because I'm a resident and I love the neighborhood. And Rocky Balboa just joined us. But please be considerate of the residents of the neighborhood because I chose... I'm committed. I chose to stay in the Hill Section. I could have moved to Clark Summit, like most of my colleagues, and most of my teacher friends live in Clark Summit, but I chose to live in the Hill Section. And I love my neighbors, but I don't trust Geisinger. I don't trust the zoning nonsense that's going on right now. And I'm here tonight, and I was just going to be brief to please... I'm begging you to vote no or consider... Let's having, you know, like what I just heard was a town hall meeting. Excellent idea. But do not rush this through because it is profit-based. We all know that. We're not stupid. So please consider and vote no for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Linda Lyons from the 400 block of Wheeler Avenue. My grandparents bought the home that I live in in 1926, and I am now the current owner. So next year, we'll own that house for 100 years. I'm one of the Neyog Park residents that have been told that we are morons, crybabies, selfish, and that we should move from our homes and let Geisinger expand as they please. We have been told that within the walls of Geisinger, that some of the employees literally hate us for blocking healthcare, which we are not doing. We never have been. We're all getting older. After speaking with one of the employees on one of my walks up the park, I explained the history of our concerns that started in 2022, 23. This employee did not know any of this history and was only told from within the walls of Geisinger that we were blocking healthcare. I briefly discussed the history and concerns about traffic congestion, height, lighting, noise, et cetera. Geisinger is trying to change our neighborhood into a medical-industrial park. It's a neighborhood, and we were trying... And we are trying to do a compromise that will work for all of us. As I read the rest of this, as I'm going to give you a history of my living there, please try to imagine your own neighborhoods, either growing up or currently. I was born in 1953 in the Hanneman Hospital. My mother was born there in 1923, which is located in the middle of the 300 block of Colfax Avenue. My friends and I always went to the Coral Flax Market, which was down the street, across the street. We would purchase penny candy there, and my mother did her grocery shopping there. In 1962, Hanneman Hospital merged with Westside Hospital and is now called CMC East and CMC West. Westside Hospital was then closed in 1962. I may be off a little bit on the years, but I'm close. In 1966, one of our favorite homes as children, also known as the Haunted House, was torn down, and the school of nursing was built in the 300 block of Colfax, which is right across the street from the Hanneman. In '67, '68, construction began to expand the original hospital, and that expansion was the beginning of numerous other homes being torn down on Colfax Avenue, Arthur Avenue, Mulberry, and Linden Street. Some owners refused to sell, so it wasn't until these owners passed away and their properties were then sold to CMC by the families. A block of tax revenue totally gone. In approximately 1974, due to the expansion, they needed a parking garage. So this time, the footprint further moved across the street to the 300 block of Colfax and Mulberry on that corner. More homes torn down, more tax revenue gone. Eventually, that whole half-block was gone, including the Colfax Market, with the exception of one small little home that remained sandwiched in, in the middle of the block, which was eventually gobbled up by the... When the owners passed away. The elderly couple that lived there were never going to give up their pride and joy. Then in 2003 came a second garage on the corner of Linden and Colfax. More homes gone, more tax revenue gone. February 2012, Geisinger Health System and CMC merged. 2013, yet another expansion project was launched. Project was completed on the corner of Arthur and Mulberry Street. Gobbling, gobbling, gobbling. In 2012, Geisinger purchased Audubon School, and at that time, nothing happened, but as we know now, they're working on that area. 2022, Geisinger began aggressively buying properties on the even and odd side of the 200 and 400 block of Colfax Avenue. Also, properties on Vine and Roseland Street were purchased. Offers were made on some properties on the 400 block of Arthur Avenue, but the owners turned them down. More tax revenue gone from those other purchases. GCMC told owners who refused to sell at that time that they were not civic-minded, and now we are portrayed as selfish. The neighborhood has given up plenty for the expansion of this hospital since 1962. And overall, between Geisinger and the University of Scranton, the Hill Section has given up plenty for the city of Scranton. Now we are a shell of what we used to be. We, as neighbors, only want more time to work out plans regarding height arrangements and other concerns that we have, noise, et cetera, as I mentioned before. Things that can make it comfortable for both of us, something that will blend in, not look like shipping containers dropped in the middle of a block. The neighbors seemed to get the news late, and after plans were in the works for months and are now being pushed through. Why? Just last month, 11/17, while a Hill Neighborhood Association meeting, we were told that Geisinger... By Geisinger, there were no plans, and yet the next day in the Scranton Times, there were plans. So sadly to say, Geisinger has not been honest with the residents, and we are very mistrusting of anything they say. During the first zoning discussion, I asked the mayor and some city council members, "How would you like to suddenly find yourself looking at 100-foot building instead of your neighbor's back or front yard?" Everyone admitted, after continually pressing for an answer, said, "I wouldn't." People who work at Geisinger park their car, walk to a large building, and work. People who work at Geisinger park their car, walk to a large building and work, then they leave and go home to their neighborhood. This is our neighborhood. Why is the mayor pushing this through before the zoning hearing is even scheduled? Why can't it wait until January, when new council members are sworn in?
Thank you, Linda.
Why? That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is, my name is Mary Beth Kishuba, and I live in the 1800 block of East Gibson Street, actually across from the old Army Reserve National Guard. I'm here on behalf of the neighbors of Naughton and the Hill. I'm going to open and say, first, do no harm. It's the gospel of the health care industry. We share concerns with the mayor, with the council, with the hospital about the pressures on health care in our county. Lackawanna County has over 200,000 people, and how many communities, I'm not even sure. Lots of land. We are to understand that the only solution to the health care pressures in this whole county is the destruction of this beloved and historic neighborhood that sits on the edge of the crown jewel of the city, Naughton Park. These particular neighbors are going to be forced by their city government to personally sacrifice their property values, their homes, their quality of life for the entire county. Scranton has 35% of the population of the county and 75% of the hospitals. All three of those are in the Hill section. This is not, not in my backyard. This is, please, asking for guardrails. How much does the Hill section have to continue to give for the benefit of the entire county? There are other options. We could have smaller buildings, other location. Why should all of the people of Carbondale, Archibald, Oliphant, Clark Summit, Dixon City, Blakely, all have to traipse up to Naughton when they need health care? There's no other spot where we can provide emergency services? The city is changing the rules in the middle of the game. The zoning in place prior to 2023 had the institutional zone at 105 feet. However, it was limited to 40 feet, when within 40 feet of a residential property line. Those protections were stripped out of the 2023 voting, zoning quietly, without any real discussion to the neighbors about what it meant. No one living here now could have possibly anticipated such a massive change. These blocks were full of houses and a school. Geisinger bought these properties while it was still zoned residential. They, according to a news article today, they spent over $6 million buying properties in a residential zone and tearing them down. It went to our homes. The money people spend on their homes is a drop in the bucket compared to the money Geisinger has, but it is everything to the people who spend it. We have so many questions. Will there be patient rooms staring into people's backyards? Will there be 24/7 security lights? The beeping of vehicles backing up? Warning sounds when cars exit the garage? Where will the garbage be stored? What will the traffic flow be like? The way to answer these questions is to vote no tonight and go through zoning. A no tonight is not the end of the line for health care expansion. It is simply a pause to put guardrails in place to answer all these questions. A little personal story. We bought a lot and we built. We were probably one of the only people in 30 years to build in the city of Scranton without a Koz, tax exemption. We were across from what was then an active Army Reserve and National Guard. We were okay with that. We called zoning and said, "What if they move?", which they ended up doing. Can a sheet move in? And they chuckled and they said, "It would revert to residential. Any changes would have to go through the zoning board. That allows a hearing with the neighbors and the neighbors would never allow it. That would never happen." I now feel that was a hollow promise. And if someone decides that Geisinger needs that property across from me, I will also have another hospital there. Who's to stop them? They're getting this, who's to stop them? I don't know about you, but I like to come home after a busy day, sit on my deck, look at the sky, the trees, the birds. How would you feel sitting on your back deck staring at a 75-foot building right behind your house? If it were me, I would move. I would ruin everything I loved about my home. I'd be gone. Who would buy it, though? Who would buy it now? I can tell you who would probably buy it. If those homes on Arthur sell, Geisinger will buy them for insurance, just in case, for their next expansion, which will now run right up the street into the park. Say no now, go through zoning, let's explore options, let's involve the community, the people who live there, whose lives are directly impacted, like any other variance would, would have to do. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Last building city resident. You know, I don't even know why this is before council. This is a zoning issue. It shouldn't be before council. And here's an example of another business that had a zoning issue. A gentleman years ago wanted to open a deli on Lafayette Street. I don't know if any of you were on council then. He came before council. He said, he was told, "Sir, this is a zoning issue. You shouldn't be here. You have to go to the zoning board." So why is CMC going in before council? This is a zoning issue. It should go to the zoning board. It's not a council issue. It's just the mayor wants to shove down everybody's throat. And I have an answer to the woman from Greenwich, why it's being shoved down everybody's throat before the end of the year. Because now the mayor has three rubber stampers on council. After the new council takes over in January, her rubber stamps will be gone. She won't get her way. And that's why this is being pushed down everybody's throat. And that's a fact. Next thing, nobody is against healthish, health, health care. I was diagnosed with a serious health problem a year and a half ago at Geisinger. I'm totally for more health care. But why don't they build the addition of the hospital across where they want to do the garage? Why build a garage there? Put the addition where they want to put the garage. It won't have to be 75 feet high. There already is a parking garage across the street. This is ridiculous. Like I said this a couple of weeks ago, a couple other people said, "Who wants to look out the window and see a 100-foot parking garage?" It's a beautiful area there. Naughton Park is there. It's ridiculous. So I hope you consider this and vote no. And next, in the paper on Sunday, the mayor had a commentary. She said, "Oh, everybody wants health care, blah, blah, blah." Not once does she mention anything about a parking garage. So like we said, nobody's against health care. We definitely need better health care in this area. But the answer is not building a, not, how does building a garage help with health care? It just blows my mind. And I know two of you up there are definitely going to vote for this. So I know Councilwoman Rothschild, she's going to have to swing vote. So we'll see how much she cares about her neighbors by the way she votes. And I think she'll rubber stamp for the mayor like she has her whole career on council. But let, hopefully she'll prove me wrong, but I doubt it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. One second here. Good evening, Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike McDermott. I'm the business manager of Local 81, the Electricians Union, and also the president of Scranton Building and Construction Trades. I'm here to express my support for this project. I hope that this zoning change will go through and allow Geisinger Health to move forward with this much-needed construction project in our area. Expansion is not only vital to our strength in our community's health care system, it's also a major construction project that will bring significant economic growth, the social benefits to our region. Projects of this scale support local workers, local contractors, and local businesses, creating both construction jobs and long-term health care employment. Geisinger's proposed expansion will address several critical needs. Increased capacity and reduced wait times. Hospitals in our region are strained. Additional buildings mean additional rooms, expanded treatment areas, and more efficient care, ensuring our residents receive timely, high-quality medical attention that they deserve. The construction of these new buildings will allow Geisinger to introduce updated technologies, expand diagnostics, and specialty care, and continue its reputation for excellence and innovation. A project of this size injects millions into our local economy. School tradespeople, contractors, suppliers, small businesses all benefit. These jobs are for local families, jobs that help strengthen our local and regional workforce. Once completed, these buildings will house permanent positions from nurses and technicians to support staff and specialists, further stabilizing and growing the local labor job market. We always hear our children have to leave this area to find good jobs. Aside from the obvious jobs created in the medical field, construction projects like this will help grow apprenticeship numbers throughout the building trades. Construction jobs offer family-sustaining wages with great benefits, including top-notch health care and retirement plans. More space in modern facilities means Geisinger can respond more effectively to surges in demand, emergencies, and public health changes. This project is fundamental in ensuring that our community continues to thrive and access to health care services it depends on. I fully understand that a construction project like this will raise concern with nearby residents. I truly do. It's important to recognize that Colfax and Mulberry has been the site of a hospital for about 120 years. The vacant lawn across the street was the site of John Audubon's school for roughly 100 years. Most of what Geisinger is proposing will not completely change the landscape and fabric of this neighborhood. Zoning decisions must be made with fairness, balance, and the broader public interest in mind. Geisinger's health expansion is critical infrastructure that benefits the entire community, not just individual residents. But allowing those concerns alone to halt a project with such wide-reaching benefit would come at a tremendous cost to public health, regional preparedness, and economic growth. I'm sure everyone here tonight, as is a friend, loved one, or even themselves, spend countless hours up at the emergency waiting room, in most cases, in a hallway bed, because there is a lack of actual rooms. Would you want your mother, grandmother, or child stuck in a hallway for hours, even days? There's no privacy, very little dignity. You're at the emergency room because something bad already happened. It shouldn't be made worse by the current conditions of Geisinger CMC's emergency room. Tonight, I respectfully ask you to approve Geisinger's health zoning change proposal so this essential project can move forward, strengthen our health care system, and support our workforce while improving the quality of life for the entire community. I thank you for your time and your dedication to this area.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Anyone else?
Tom Coymanuka. Zoning variances should be handled in the zoning board. They don't belong here. Changes in zoning, spot zoning, do not belong in this body. Picking and choosing where you want to change things because of a wealthy organization don't belong here. Community interests do belong here. You have a zoning board and a zoning process and moves for changing it and variances that are physically out there and there's a proper pathway. They don't belong here. I know it's going to be a three to two. We all know that. We all know that's futile and we're actually speaking to absolutely no one at this point. But I ask you, parking garages, why can't they be built somewhere else? Do we not have the ability to have shuttle buses? Do shuttle buses not exist? We do them at airports. We do them at transportation stations. We do them everywhere else. I understand for dropping off someone at a hospital, yes. But there is no reason to have a 75 or 100-foot garage directly there when you have the ability to have people go park in a garage nearby and run a shuttle back and forth for employees and everywhere else. It doesn't need to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. My name is Sean Seabrook. I am a resident with my wife at the 1800 block of East Gibson, right across from the back of Naughton Park. One speaker tonight called it "The Park, the Jewel of Scranton," and he's not wrong. I'm just going to read a very small excerpt from Jim Lockwood's article posted on the Times Tribune website tonight. Quote, "Schuster and McCandrew have questioned the timing of the mayor's rezoning proposal, with McCandrew having called the mayor's rezoning 'a rush job,' unquote." Now, I'm going to be using the word "right" a lot in the next few minutes because I think the councilors are right to listen to the thought that they have at the back of their mind. And now, if it helps to see what I'm trying to say here, I have a life philosophy, and that is, everything is a relationship. Spouse to spouse, girlfriend to boyfriend, parent to child, employer to employee, people that have power in the area to people that don't. But when you take away all of these titles for the forms of relationship, there are only really two types. It's either healthy or it's not. So once you notice this, you begin to see tactics that don't sit right, tactics that give one a moment to pause because, well, things don't seem right at all. Things seem like they're being a bit rushed. The gathering you see here tonight are people that mostly agree with that sentiment that this is a rush job, getting a foot in the door, and it's not a tactic that you would expect from a healthy type of relationship. Abigail Geisinger, the founder of the original Geisinger Hospital, once said of her first hospital, "Build it right." This is an opportunity for you, for Risen Health in Washington DC and Kaiser Permanente in Oakland, California, to do just that. Build it right. And the plan to block out the evening sun for some of the most bucolic buildings in the city, in my opinion, is not doing it right. So I ask the council to listen to that hunch on this rezoning issue, and I thank you for your time. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Dawn Marino, and I live in the Hill section as well with my husband, James. And I actually wasn't even going to speak tonight. I wasn't sure I was going to be here. I, funny enough, just had surgery, so I understand the importance of health care, hospitals, and all that. But it was too important to not be here tonight because I'm asking that you vote no because there's been a lack of transparency, questions haven't been answered, and there's really just no need to rush this. You know, I sat here tonight listening to what everyone in the front row had to say, but they don't have anything to say about the residents. And we're the ones that are in the middle of it. So we're just asking for some fairness, and that's why we'd like to vote no, so that there's more time, questions can be answered. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Frankie Malacarria, resident, South Side, Scranton. We've heard a lot from our neighbors today about what's going to be, about the potentials of the future for the 400 block of Colfax Avenue. I have a friend that lives just down the block, on the 500 block of Colfax Avenue. And she bought a beautiful house on that block and is planning on renting some of the space that she has out to nurses. And personally, you know, she would benefit, you know, from having an expansion of the hospital, more nurses working there, more of a rent. And in our conversations, she said, "Yeah, but I don't want to feel railroaded by my government." And for the city of Scranton to make an exemption for a special interest group, you know, albeit it is a hospital, none of us, you know, want to block access to health care. We want to see expanded health care access in our neighborhoods. But we don't want to see community concerns being railroaded in terms of public benefits. There has been lots of talk this evening about how there's a process that any other organization that would be looking to do this would have to go through, and that would be through the zoning board. From my understanding, I spoke with Todd Pousley about this, and there- From my understanding, I spoke with Todd Pousley about this, and there just isn't a class between the 45-foot height limit and the 100-foot height limit of the industrial, from town, city, town-village industrial to civic, I believe is the change. That could be another potentiality of figuring this out. A lot of the concerns are whether or not Geisinger is going to be keeping to that 70-foot limit that they're saying. If we had some sort of zone in between those two that would limit that, that would be one way of alleviating a lot of concerns from the residents, from my understanding. Their, you know, community benefit agreement was listed earlier, and that would be one way of legally binding Geisinger to sticking to a 70-foot height limit as well. There are lots that Geisinger could do, you know, if they are going to be using that new parking garage for parking for the nurses. Is there a way that we're going to be re-greening the space in Naug Park that is currently used for nurse parking during the day? I'd heard, you know, a handful of other things, like if it is a parking garage, can we get some commercial buildings or spaces on the bottom floor that would, you know, not only bring some more liveliness to the Hill section, but would allow for taxable income for the city at that point, being commercial properties, you know, inside of it, similar to the garages that the city maintains downtown? We had heard from Geisinger today that they want to continue to be good neighbors, and they want to continue to be part of the neighborhood. But from listening to the neighbors here today, it feels like Geisinger hadn't had, reached out enough to the community. Just this week, that, you know, they hosted the Senate, not senator, attempted to be senator at their facility, CMC, this week, but I don't remember ever seeing any meetings like that for the community. So, I think, you know, at the very top of the meeting, Bridget, the mayor, all said that, like, everyone here wants access to health care, and I think that's entirely true, but it's the idea of railroading the community and just going through this, going through council, where Geisinger is then in, like, a separate class of organization that doesn't have to follow by the same rules as everybody else. And I think that's one of the main concerns here. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful evening, and I urge you to vote no on this, at least until a community benefit or some other sort of an arrangement can be made to make sure that they can stick to what they're saying is, like, 70 feet rather than going all the way to 100. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Megan. I'm a nurse at Geisinger CMC. I also work pre-hospital in the communities surrounding Scranton and in Scranton as well. I'm coming to ask for your vote of yes for the expansion because, as someone who works both pre-hospital and within those hospital walls, I see the crisis nobody else does. Everybody says, "I've been in those hallway beds." I know. You don't know till you've experienced it every day when you're coming in at 7:00 PM at night and seeing 70-plus people sitting in that ER, and then wondering how you're going to get them upstairs when they're admitted, and you know there's only 262 beds in that hospital and nowhere else to go. You're boarding patients in that ER so they can get services that they need, whether it be placement at a nursing facility, whether they're waiting to go upstairs. Those people are sitting in that ER, waiting. To go where? Nowhere till we discharge somebody. We can't do that. We can't discharge people early, then they end up back, then they're not getting proper health care, and that's not fair to them. As the ambulance coming in and you're standing there waiting for a bed, you know, over the years, I've seen them work their butts off to get better flow in that ER so ambulances could get back out on the street and they're not sitting there. That's where those hallway beds came in. That's where those seats came in out in triage. People even have to go to the waiting room when they come in by the ambulance because where else are you going to put them? You got to put them somewhere. You can't just sit there with the ambulance the whole day because there's a shortage of those as well. So, in order to get the flow going, they find a place for you. They've made beds. Now, they've reached that capacity in their ER. They can't do that anymore. Now, we're back to standing and waiting, just like COVID, we stood and waited too. At times, you've even sat out in your ambulance if that patient had symptoms, and you waited. I understand people don't want to give up, you know, their rights as, you know, property owners and their view, but at the same time, I've seen comments of, "I leave the city to go for care. I go to Philadelphia. I go to New York." Those citizens went through the same thing. They lost their views and their property so their hospitals can expand to better suit everybody also coming from the area. This hospital serves multiple communities, multiple counties. We are the only Level 2 trauma center between, and then you have Level 1 at GWV, but we serve everything up to New York, and sometimes people come in from New York as a trauma. And yeah, time counts with traumas. I could tell you, as both a pre-hospital provider, someone who works for the trauma team, and someone who has also worked in the ER, that time does matter for them. And if it wasn't for this facility being as close as it is and as accessible as it is, I can't say some of these patients would have survived. I understand, I completely understand that we all want that view. We don't want to be staring at buildings or parking garages, but this is bigger than all of us. We are in a crisis. To everybody else, it doesn't seem like the world's falling down because they're not living it every day. Bringing this expansion will also bring more jobs to the community, whether it be nurses, physicians, housekeeping, construction, you name it, not to mention the Right to Work Tax. You're paying that, so you're not losing tax revenue. You're still bringing that in. We still have that. It's not fair to the surrounding communities that are coming from miles away for people to say, "Well, I want my view of the park. That's more important than your health and your safety." So, I'm going to ask you if you can vote yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, yes. Good evening, and thanks for being here. I, my name is Tom Hopple. I'm a neighbor. I live at 215 Arthur Avenue in Scranton, and I've, you know, really only had a few weeks to prepare for this because nobody has really sort of told us that this change was going to happen. It hasn't been really known, at least known by me, for the last few weeks. All of a sudden, I'm going to be literally surrounded by the hospital. My beautiful house that I worked, you know, I spent exactly nine months full-time, full cruise renovating, is going to be, you know, just basically surrounded by the hospital with no warning. There's also no plan for the 200 block of Colfax, absolutely no plan. We don't know what the impact of this situation will be on our living situation. Already, I have helicopters basically landing half a block from my house. There is trucks backing up into, like, half a block from my house. I hear beeping all day, and now, because we're at the backside, we're on the Linden side of the hospital, so that's basically, it's been turned into a loading zone area. So, I basically have to go through the loading zone of the hospital now to get out of my house. I have to, I can't, I can no longer go through that area to get into my garages. So, I have to go down to Roseland Street, and like, a day like the last week, I can't get up Roseland Street in the, in clement weather. I have to go all the way around, through all the traffic of the hospital, around the emergency facilities to get to my house in a safe way. There's been no planning at all. There isn't even a plan for the 200 block of Colfax, nothing, not even, like, an idea. Maybe they're going to use it for parking, and if that's the case, that they can put up a 100-foot building behind my house, I'm going to be staring right out at parking, which, if their current parking situation is any indication, they burn the lights all night. I can see them from my kitchen window. They don't turn off. There's, like, it looks like a spaceship is landing there all night because they just have the lights burning, and that's also where the helicopters land. Again, it's less than a half a block from my house, so I just think that if this is being forced through so that you guys can vote on this, I think that's extremely unfair. We needed more time. We asked, had, went to, to a judge today to try and get this deferred. You guys seem to want to force this through before the council changes so that you have a favorable vote. Without notifying the neighbors, giving any due process, there's no studies about the impact on this situation to the neighborhood, and we're all for health care too, but there's a lot of sites around Scranton that would be much more viable. Ryan Barrett was here the other night testifying in front of you, and he said, he made a really good point. You're trying to shoehorn into a community a huge facility, and it's never going to work. It's never going to work. It's not going to work. You can try it. The way in and out of that neighborhood is ridiculous. I mean, coming into my house today, I'm going around food trucks, there's traffic going both ways. The loading zone that was created at some point on Linden Street doesn't even give a 10-foot, you know, 10 feet from the, from the curb or from the side of the street so that I can get out of Linden Street safely. I mean, there's trucks parked there all, all the time, noise beeping, hissing, air products are going in and out of there, huge tanks, I mean, you name it. So, now you're going to put a 100-foot garage behind my house, too? I mean, those, those used to be something, those houses. It's a shame what's happened, really. This, this hospital needs to find another facility to use.
Thank you, Mr. Hopple.
Members of Council, Ledman, Skakidi, Arthur Avenue. I'm sorry I got here a little late. Dr. Rothschild is not present? How is this, what's going on here? You doing it by telephone? Is she on the speaker or something? She can hear us?
Yes.
Oh, okay. May I approach?
Sure.
Thanks.
I just wanted to give you a way, something to remember. The ER is, that's called, two years ago. Sorry. Let me give you now, a quick news, year and a half ago, to give you a visual of what the neighbors generally will see, but in particular, the neighbors in the 400 block of Arthur Avenue. We did have a couple of meetings with Geisinger representatives, the last one being, I believe, a week ago, yesterday in the greenhouse. There were three representatives present. We asked them then, I sent them an email the next day, and I asked them to request that council defer the decision until we can develop some kind of hospital neighborhood group to work through the differences that we have so that maybe we can reach a compromise. No response, at least no response indicating that they're willing to do that. And I think the answer is, and I said this to them that evening, they must know something that we don't. I found it interesting that speakers tonight are saying they know what the vote is going to be, and that would certainly answer the question about why we're getting this done before a new council comes in. I think it really destroys the credibility of those of you who think they're going to support this project. But what I heard tonight from the mayor, the representative, and others, is the same thing we heard two years ago. There's nothing different about it at all, except that now they may have some inside opportunity to get what they want to get or what they wanted to get a year and a half I don't know what's different. We had a supermajority last time that voted against the zoning change. Three of you who were sitting there tonight, plus Dr. Rothschild, voted against it. Someone's going to have to convince me that there's something important that's different and requires immediate action by this council before our new council can come in and consider the same issue. We don't want to fight with Geisinger, but we want to be part of the solution. And by voting yes on this amendment, you're essentially leaving us out of the equation, period. By voting no and requiring Geisinger to go before the zoning hearing board, we have an opportunity to participate in the process. We don't have that tonight. So, whatever the motivation is, and whatever the vote's going to be, I hope that those of you who voted no last time will vote no again this evening because there's no difference between last time, last year's argument, and this year's argument, except that Geisinger wants us to believe that they have some kind of idea about what they want to do there. That's great. But for me, and where I sit each summer in the evening hours, have a cigar, my deck will be probably less than 100 feet from the back of whatever they build in the 400 block of Colfax. The sun will go down on my deck at 3:00 in the afternoon, and that'll be it. So, Geisinger will have its, whatever they have, and the neighbors will have nothing. And a vote yes tonight gives the neighbors nothing. We've all sacrificed. We've all worked. We've all improved our homes. We've all been in effort to be good citizens, responsible citizens. We pay our taxes, and is this what we're going to get? I don't know, but again, when I hear people come up here and say, "We know what the vote is going to be," that tells me everything I need to know about why we're doing this now, and I just can't believe it. So, we're not opposed to health care. We welcome health care, but there has to be an option that includes the neighbors. And a yes vote today will exclude the neighbors, and we get whatever Geisinger wants to give us. Is this what your legacy should be, Mr. King? I ask you that question tonight. Is this what you want your legacy to be? I hope not. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Hello. Barbara O'Malley, Wheeler Avenue resident. It's a little bit of a story about David and Goliath, or the Alamo. I'm not quite sure where I'm at. For a long time, every time I, you know, the last couple of weeks, people say, oh, you know, they recognize me, and they say, "Oh, you're really in a Dave and Goliath situation." And I knew we were Davids, but I never thought that the Goliath would be our city government. In the last few weeks, the neighbors have learned that council and Geisinger have been in talks since September, excuse me, since summer. We were told there were no plans, and the next day, they were in the paper. The ordinance put forth by the mayor was slipped under the wire, and there is much speculation as to why. Definitely circumventing the variance process would be one thing. Today, when I was walking my dog, I noticed a zoning notice on a telephone pole on Colfax Avenue, which I had never seen before. It was, it was the first one I've seen.
It was the first one I've seen since this process started. It was interesting to me that it was dated December 1st, and it was in pristine condition. But we had a snowstorm on December 2nd, which would have obliterated, so I don't know. I don't know whether it was reposted, I'm not, I still don't know the story behind that, but I found it very curious. I asked my neighbors, "Did anybody notice any, seen any notices on poles?" Because we're all daily walkers, we go to the park, "No, nobody noticed it." Lastly, and most disheartening, was today we learned that the city was able to bypass notifying the neighbors of zoning by a letter, because they were only required to notify the tract owner by letter of the rezoning. So ironically, they sent a letter to CMC, Geisinger, alerting them that there was going to be a zoning change. That's rich, that's really rich. It tells me that we in the city are simply collateral damage when it comes to getting this ordinance through. So I ask you, council, and I'm asking you, Jessica, I hope you can hear me, are you going to facilitate a genuine dialogue between the taxpayers you represent, Scranton residents, the Scranton residents in this room, and we know we are outnumbered by many people who are in from Scranton? Are you going to represent the taxpayers, the Scranton, the residents of the neighborhoods, the homeowners, at a town hall as suggested, define a reasonable compromise, or are you going to fall in line with Goliath? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jess Nolan, Beine Street. I think as many of you know, and as those before me who have spoken have shared, this conversation is not just about zoning. It's about power, it's about influence, and it's about process. I want to read you guys, you've probably read this before, but I wanted to read you the preamble to the Home Rule Charter for the city of Scranton that was established on September 26, 1979. "We, the people of the city of Scranton, in adopting this Home Rule Charter, recognize that government is competent only when those who compose it work as trustees of the people. As a servant of the people, good government must be responsive to their basic human needs. Therefore, to secure these goals, this charter is ordained and established." Government is competent only when those who compose it work as trustees of the people. I want to start by thanking several of you on the days tonight for your questions at last week's caucus, because I think we saw that competence at work in many of those questions. Mr. King, you asked really important questions about the aesthetics of the proposed building. You expressed how important it would be that the building fit into the neighborhood and ensure that lighting and noise did not disrupt the quality of life. Mr. McAndrew, you asked what to many of us seems like a simple question, why isn't Geisinger following proper procedure and applying for a variance? And I sincerely appreciate those questions, as they reflect many of the concerns held by the affected neighbors. Towards the end of the caucus, Mr. King, you asked Geisinger reps if they would give you their word, if they would not build above a certain height. And Mr. Schuster, you jumped in, which I really appreciated, and you acted as a trustee of the people when you asked, "How would we hold them to their word if this ordinance gets passed?" Unfortunately, meaningful promises can only be made from a foundation of trust that is just not present between Geisinger and the neighborhood. As philosopher Thomas Hobbes said, "Covenants without the sword are but words and of no strength to secure a man at all." The fact of the matter is, neither council or the neighborhood will have any leverage to hold Geisinger to their word about height and aesthetics if council approves the mayor's ordinance and the zoning is changed to civic. They will be given a blank check, as others have already said. And honestly, I don't blame Geisinger for not taking the time to build trust with the neighborhood. Why would they? The mayor, and I'm very glad she's here tonight, has made clear from the start that they have her wholehearted support. What has come as a surprise to me is her utter disregard and lack of consideration for the affected residents and park users. Rather than helping to facilitate dialogue between the neighbors and the hospital, rather than thinking outside the box about how, where to best meet the healthcare needs of our region, rather than inventing options for mutual gain, as good leaders do, she chose the side of the hospital. Not once, but twice. And I want to insert here, I like the mayor. I think she's done a lot of good work on various issues in the city. But she has made a mistake in not including the neighborhood in the process from the start. And as Israeli Prime Minister Shimon Peres said, "When a friend makes a mistake, the friend remains a friend, and the mistake remains a mistake." The last time we went through this process, council, without any help from the mayor's office, two years ago, we were able to reach a compromise solution in the SAPA zoning plan that allowed the hospital to expand at a height that was appropriate for a residential neighborhood. And I've just got to point out here, the false dichotomy that is being presented to council tonight. Either the hospital gets to expand in exactly the way they want, or we get no improved healthcare. That is a failure of creativity. If that is truly how GCMC reps see the situation, this is a problem that can be solved. The choice before council is not whether or not to vote to approve this ordinance. Mayor, Geisinger want you to think a no vote is a vote against expansion, but that is just not the case. Your decision today, as a trustee of the people, is to consider what the needs of the people are, right? To vote no to protect the process, to vote no to protect transparency. So I'm asking you today to say yes to the democratic process by voting no on this ordinance proposed by the mayor. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, there is no one else. No further business, I intend a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion adjourned.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, we'll start our regular meeting in about five or 10 minutes.